Good morning, everybody. The press and the Down Beach Current were notified of this special meeting. A copy of same was posted on bulletin board in the municipal building and on the municipal website. Our meeting will come to order. Would you please take a second and turn off your phones and electronic equipment, and we will stand for the flag salute. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, unafraid, individual, liberty, justice, and all. Those you'd call their own, please.
Mr. Becker?
Here.
Ms. Tohby?
Here.
And Mr. Blumberg?
Here.
Before we begin the meeting, I'm going to just go around the table and ask each person to introduce themselves and tell you what they do. Frank, you want to start?
I'm Frank Ricchetti. I am the Director of Public Works. I've been working for this city for 41 years.
Good morning. I'm David Wolfson. I'm Chief of Police, and I've been with the city for 31 years.
Good morning. I'm Rich Deeny. I'm the Business Administrator. I've been here for two and a half years.
Scott Abbott. I'm the City Solicitor, and although I've been the City Solicitor, this is the fourth year. I've raised my family here, and I've lived here for over 40 years.
Good morning. I am Commissioner Omari Blumberg, and I make sure that we collect enough money to pay the bills, and that we do, in fact, pay the bills.
I am Mike Becker, and I'm proud to be Mayor of this wonderful city, and I have been involved in city government seven years. I've lived in Margate for 46.
Are we going to do reports after this? My name's Brenda Tohby. I proudly serve as your Commissioner of Public Works. It's my first term in office, and I am proud to say that I'm your first-ever female elected representative.
I'm Rosie Freed. I'm the Deputy City Clerk. I've been here 23 years, and I came here through marriage, and I feel very fortunate to live here.
Good morning. I'm Jim Galantino, your Building Inspector and your Flood Person. So if anybody had any questions about flood, give me a call. I've been here about 24 years.
Thank you, everybody, and to you in the audience, you should really be proud of the folks up here. We're really very lucky to have such wonderful people working for the city. Now, before we begin, I'd like to make a little comment. I think Commissioner Tohby also has a little report. I'd like to just bring everyone up to date on the Dune issue. The City Commission at Thursday's meeting voted unanimously -- key word here, unanimously -- to hire former Congressman Rob Andrews of the Dilworth-Paxton Law Firm to assist the city in its opposition to the Dune project. Again, we voted unanimously to hire Charles Rooney of T&amp;M Associates to provide coastal engineering consulting services to the city, also in opposition to the Dune project. The cost of the Dilworth-Paxton contract is not to exceed $20,000. The T&amp;M contract is for a flat $3,000. Additionally, Congressman Andrews has assured us that should the project begin before we have the opportunity to make our case, his firm will be prepared to immediately seek legal relief. This, however, would be under a separate contract yet to be negotiated. I just wanted to make that announcement for those of you who weren't aware of what happened last Thursday. Thank you. Brenda, do you have a comment?
As I said before, I'm your Commissioner of Public Works, and I proudly work with Frank Ricchetti. Our department is in charge of the beautiful landscape of the city, its infrastructure, and parks and public buildings. And we also -- Public Works also oversees recreation, so we provide fun recreational activities for people of all ages, all year round. And Joy Cantor is here, and Joy has done an outstanding job with our -- I'm sure you've all seen our quarterly brochure guide. She does that single-handedly, and Margate's really fortunate to have such a team player. Thank you, Joy. Thank you. We started hosting these summer town hall meetings in 2011 so that our seasonal residents could have an opportunity to meet us and, you know, learn important things about our city. Although I know that some of you are probably not here just for that, you probably want to talk about the dunes, and I think Mayor Becker pretty much gave the recap of where we stand. As I noted in my report, and it's up here on the table, and Rosie offered to make more copies if we need them, I find that there's three distinct groups of people in our community from talking to everybody. Some that just want to fight this all the way, no matter what, because our beaches are beautiful, and they are, and because they think we don't need the dunes. And then we have another group of people that may not be for the dunes, but they don't want to spend money on what they think could be a losing battle. And then we have a third group who thinks that, you know, the dunes aren't so bad and that they can protect us, and they don't want to fight. So I think that what we did last -- this past week was we recognized that everybody feels very passionately, whatever their view is, and we made an effort to try to do the best that we can to bring everybody together. And really, whatever anybody's opinion is, we really need to respect each other's views because I think we all really just want the best for Margate. Other city business. As most of you know, we've been displaced from City Hall because of Sandy, and we've found a new home in Union Avenue School. The old City Hall, or our City Hall, rather, will be ready according to our engineer by the end -- by next summer. And then we'll move our public meetings back over there. We'll have our court sessions over there, and we'll also have our Historical Society housed over there on the first floor. So that should be by next summer. And then in 2011, the Commission brought on a new auditor that noted some deficiencies and made recommendations. And three years later, we can all proudly report that there was no findings at all in our 2013 audit. The auditors went on to say that the city's in good financial shape, showing strong progress, and that we're heading in the right direction. So we all should be really happy about that. Margate has a larger surplus than ever, and its tax collectibles are up, and according to our auditors, that's a really positive sign for the Margate economy. And all of this was done the past three years with no municipal tax increase. As a Commissioner, I'm really proud of the financial status that we're in right now, and I commend all of our staff, and Lisa McLaughlin and Rich Deeny, who we brought on board, I think in 2011. Both Rich and Lisa and everybody's worked extremely hard on the fiscal well-being of our city, and I thank them for it. We're all fortunate to call Margate home. If there's anything that I can ever do to help, our office number is 822-0424, Commissioner Tohby at margate-nj.com, or excuse me, margate-nj.com. And you can also reach any of us up here, Mayor Becker, Commissioner Blumberg, myself, or I think any member of our team on our newly redone website. We recently got a facelift, and I think it's a lot more -- it's more user-friendly, and you can contact us through the website. That's all for my report. I welcome any questions you have, and I hope everybody enjoys their summer. Thank you.
Good morning. Okay. We're going to open -- this is your meeting, basically, folks. Agenda will be a little different. It's your meeting. We're going to open for public comment. The same rules apply as a regular meeting. You have three minutes to make your comments, and it's all yours, folks. Who would like to be first?
Mayor, excuse me, before you start, I have a letter here. Someone asked that it be read into the record because he could not be here at the meeting today.
Please do.
So this is a letter from William Fairey from 11 South Jasper Avenue, actually.
I have that letter. Go ahead.
You have it? All right. "I write this letter to express to you my vehement opposition to the dunes and my desire for Margate to fund the legal actions to prevent the dunes, even if it costs $1 million, which would be less than $200 per property or more. I am a longtime Margate summer resident/home owner. Due to a previously scheduled family fishing trip, I will be unable to attend this meeting. It is most likely that you have heard all the arguments against the dunes, but to reiterate some of the most important. Dunes would likely provide minimal or no increased protection over the existing or strengthened, heightened bulkheads. Most of the damage and cost from Sandy was not caused by the ocean but by the bay, which would not be prevented by ocean dunes. The long-term cost to Margate to maintain the dunes is unknown and potentially open-ended. These costs directly to Margate will likely exceed the $1 million mark or above. Even if federal or state funds pay most of the cost, it is not free. We just pay for it via taxes to the United States as well as New Jersey. The dunes will reduce the value of oceanfront properties without compensation to the owners. Reduced oceanfront property taxes will be shifted to all other properties. Our superb beach experience will be drastically harmed and reduce property values. By getting onto the beach will be more difficult. Our outstanding sand will be replaced by gritty, shelly sediment like in Atlantic City. Outflow pipes will restrict vision in beach walking. The ocean will not even be visible for most of our beachfront community. Dunes would provide minimal at best protection over existing or heightened bulkheads at a very high cost, in terms increased taxes, property value loss, and deteriorated community and beach attractiveness. I want you to authorize funding to prevent the dunes. Sincerely, William Fairey."
Thank you, Rosie. Would you speak into a microphone? State your name and address, please.
Hold on.
Hold on.
We don't think the mic's on.
I live on Thurlow Avenue. I'm here to tell you that spending Margate taxpayer money on this case is a complete waste of taxpayer money. This case is a loser going in, and it's a loser coming out. Public good and safety, or the perception of public good and safety, will always trump the will of the people. At the very least, the Margate taxpayer should have the right to voice an opinion as to whether to waste money on this case. Funny, if you listen to the quote, "People who have spoken group," now they say, "People have spoken enough. We don't want to hear anymore." First, let's look at the cost of the Margate taxpayer. This is going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Some people say it could cost as low as $30,000. It could never cost $30,000, and here's why. I want to tell you why it could never cost $30,000. If you have one lawyer making $400 an hour, after one week, one 40-hour week, this lawyer will have cost the Margate taxpayers $16,000. Surely, we will hear, "Time is of the essence. We need three lawyers working on this." Three lawyers, $48,000 in one week. Five weeks, $240,000. Then we will need a weather expert. The other side has weather experts, Ph.D. weather experts out the door for free. It's called NOAA. We have to hire a weather expert. We have to study the situation, prepare a report, attend meetings on our behalf, easily $20,000. We need an engineer. We have bulkheads. It does not sway the other side. They know we have bulkheads. They have unlimited engineers for free. We have to hire one engineer, another $20,000 minimum. This case is a loser. Public safety, perception of public safety will always outweigh the will of the people. No one mentions Atlantic City, Vettner, and Longport. They support the dunes. Quote, "Mayor Russo," quote, "These storms are game changers. I have to worry about public safety. I'm not going to wait." Frank Lobiondo, a proponent of beach replenishment, quote, "Evidence was clear that communities with dunes and engineered beaches suffered significantly less damage during Sandy than those without." As I have said, these projects are about protecting property and lives, not simply suntans on the beach. Against this backdrop, you are asking us to fund this case. Here's the case that a one-year person out of law school will win. Judge, here's an aerial picture of Absekin Island. Three communities on this island have spent tens of millions of dollars on a wall of protection. This little community doesn't want it. They have voted against it. We are simply asking you to protect the property of Absekin Island.
15 seconds, Mr. Metzman. 15 seconds.
15 seconds? I will cut to the -- almost to the end. We also hear, "This is bigger than money. I don't think we should throw $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 away. You can improve this room. You can improve the parkway." And just to cut to the end, for all these reasons, the Margate taxpayers should not waste their money on a suit that's going nowhere, or at least have the chance to vote their money for a suit that's going nowhere.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am Ernest Posner, 13 South Haverford Avenue, and I am part of the silent majority as opposed to the vocal minority. The vocal minority, if you do a little quick calculation, you find out that those people who voted to spend all of our taxpayer dollars represent less than 10% of the taxpayers in Margate. That's pretty much of a minority, as opposed to all the letters they write about how overwhelmingly this town voted to preserve the beaches as they are. They're not the majority. They are definitely a vocal minority, and the majority is now ready to speak. We've already spent money on three attorneys. One is our solicitor. Two other attorneys who represented our township, whose names were provided by this vocal minority, and they came back with letters that we've all had an opportunity to review, and these letters all said that the opportunity and the likelihood of any success is minimal. That's not a very good odds. And if they -- they're not ready to take this case. You want to find a case? You can find an attorney who will take this on a contingent basis, that if he's successful. You won't find an attorney in the state of New Jersey or anywhere else that would take this case on a contingent basis. There's no likelihood of success. By the way, if the state is forced to take our beautiful beach by eminent domain, which is what these people are saying, that's the route, let them take it, just remember that we will have to change our beach patrol uniforms. They'll all say, "New Jersey State Beach Patrol." Not in Margate. We won't have any representation on that beach. Under their proposal, let the state come in and take our beaches. That's the only way they think we should have dunes. That's a ridiculous thing. And ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, I would like to remind you that you've talked about at your meeting on Thursday, hiring more attorneys and getting their opinions on how we can fight this, not getting their opinions on whether we should fight it. You've talked -- you've already conceded. You've said you want people to come in and tell you how to fight it. Let them come in. You're giving them $20,000? Let them come in and take it on a contingent basis, and none of those people are going to speak up. As an attorney, I know what happens when you try to hire somebody on a contingent basis. The legacy of this town is left in the hands of you three Commissioners. It could be that you gave our beaches to the state for their control. I don't want that to happen. I don't want any money spent on this any longer. We've spent money already. We've got three opinions. You're going to get 13 more opinions. You've already hired two lawyers, you said, on Thursday, to get their opinions? They're not going to -- they can go talk to the people in Trenton. I forgot where I am.
15 seconds, sir.
I don't need it. I quit. Thank you, sir.
Morning. My name is Lou Greenberg for South Mansfield. I have a technical question and a comment. This might have been answered already, but since I don't reside here full-time, I miss some of the updates. Has it been looked at, instead of the dunes putting in new seawalls? We all agree that the seawalls are pretty effective, so the technical question is, has an engineer been reviewed that as an option? It's just a, you know?
The Corps of Engineers has done a study that included the bulkheads system and have come to the conclusion that, and this is their opinion, not mine, that the dunes are the most cost-effective method of all the things that they've studied.
Okay. The comment is, and some people have touched on it, and that is, and I'm not sure whether which way to proceed right now, but if we do oppose this, in my experience, there should be some attorney out there that would take this on a combination of contingency with minimum fees. I live in a community of Florida where people were just going to give up fighting Toll Developers, who's one of the most significant developers in the country. We found an attorney to take it on what I just described, and for those of us, and I'm not an attorney, just solid business experience, for those of us that have business experience, we all said, "We won that case when we hired that attorney on a contingent slash minimum fee basis." Bottom line, we won it. Millions and millions of dollars. So never give up on that idea.
Mark Cortelli, 114 North Lancaster Avenue. I am a resident full-time, but missed the last meeting, so that gives me the end to come. I want to just mention maybe two or three items. First of all, that other gentleman just finished, may have not realized that their big -- the Army Corps of Engineers' big thing is not that the bulkheads will not work, but that they have money for dunes, and that's a bottom line. The bulkheads certainly will work, but here's the situation. You have to look at the problem, see what we had as damages, and then go from there to try to fix the problem. If you look at what happened in the worst storm we've had in many, many years, we look at our beaches, they're fine. Our beaches are bigger now than 17 years ago, when I first came. Well, where was our real problem? It really was in sand in the beach blocks, as I said. Well, how did that get there? It didn't get there from the rain. It got there from wind blowing on the beach, blowing sand over the dunes, I mean, over the bulkheads. Well, how did this happen? And what are we doing with this Dune project to help it? Well, I take a look at that, and I remember when I was a young toddler there, walking along the beach, when you had a -- just a light wind, the sand would hit you in the ankles. When you had a moderately windy day, not really windy, you had sand actually hitting you in the face and hitting you in your glasses, and you'd have to cover your face from the sand. Now, you can imagine in a storm how high that would be raised. Instead of six feet, it would be raised 10 feet or more. So now, look what happens. You go and you build a lump of sand. Now, when the wind blows, you've given the sand a platform. However high you make the dune is a threat to you because if you make it 10 feet high, 15 feet high, you now have piled sand 15 feet high, and now when the wind blows, it's going to start at 15 feet high and really breach your bulkheads. So to me, this is not going to address the problem. It's going to aggravate the problem. So when the Army Corps of Engineers were here, they mentioned that, "Well, we're going to put these sand catchers on top of the dunes." So now you have a 15-foot-high dune, and now you have 10-foot-high sand catchers. You know, it gets bigger and bigger, and now the sand that's blowing off the dunes will breach these high things, which are certainly higher than our bulkheads, and that will again come in your streets. So how do you do that? Well, if you raise your bulkhead, it doesn't wear away like the sand dune does. If you were a kid building this -- everybody did. They built sand things to block the ocean, and eventually it would wear it away. Well, now, when it hits the dunes, it'll wear it down. It'll wear it down, and that'll blend in. It's not beach replenishment. It's you're replenishing the beach. You're pouring sand in a dune, which is a reservoir to continue on your beach. It really isn't beach replenishment. Our beach is fine. So now, when you got this bulkhead, if you can raise it a little bit, in a temporary situation, I know when you go in and say, "Kenyon," you walk right in. During the wintertime, they put this piece in there to block the water and the wind and whatever. Well, you can have a similar thing at the end of each, the foot of each street, that just temporarily mounts on and say, four-foot prefab sections or five-foot. You can have a truck come out here, put it at the end, "Hey, there's a storm in two days. Let's get the sand blockers up." And you put them all in, slide them in a mechanism, slide it in there.
15 seconds, Art.
All right. You take them off, and you're fine. You're back to your normal view. When they say it's going to look like Atlantic City and Vettner, the last comment is, "It won't." Because think of it, Atlantic City and Vettner have boardwalks. You stand at the dune level and look out. Yes, that's one look. But we don't have a boardwalk. We're down here in the street, and this huge dune is not going to be friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Good morning. My name is Sam Lashman. I live at Hanover Avenue. I've been reading this like a lot of people. I still have some questions. I don't think the case is really a good idea, or it can go too far the way it really is, but I'm not in favor of the plan that the state has either. I think the costs or any litigation should be tried to be minimized, but I have a few questions about the state plan. If there is a takeover, is the state obligated, under state mandate, state pay, to maintain the cost of the beach, or are they just intending to pick up or take over the whole beach and the operation in perpetuity? If you know. I don't know if that's something that's known.
Under the project, Margate is responsible for maintaining the beach, if the project gets done.
But that's if we cooperate. If we don't cooperate and say, "You go in and do it. You want to take the area by eminent domain. It's your project. It's state mandate, state pay. You can run the project, and you can do the maintenance."
It's my understanding, and we've already gotten that agreement from the Commissioner, that we are not going to sign the contract, Sam. That leaves us with no financial commitment at all, ever, in the future.
But if we -- I'm not saying to sign the contract. I'm just saying, let them run it.
I don't think that's really been determined because that's more of a practical thing than a legal thing.
The other -- another point is that I don't know if the city had area from the old boardwalk. My understanding, it was from before my time, is that Margate had a boardwalk up until sometime in the '40s. It washed away. If the state -- if the city owns the rights to rebuild the boardwalk, that would be another area that the state would have to pay and maybe compensate the city for. I don't know if that's something to look into or not. Maybe somebody knows the answer to that, or maybe the rights are gone.
We'll look into that, Sam. I do not have the answer to that one.
Okay. Just go ahead. You would look into that.
The city owns about 90% of the beaches. 10% is owned by private ownership. There was a right to maintain a public boardwalk along the full length of the Margate beach. For 60 years, approximately, Margate did have a boardwalk. The last portion of it was wiped out in 1944, and the city fathers chose not to rebuild it. it. What is your question exactly?
Can we get paid for that?
I doubt it. The taking is not to take over and run the beach or run the beach patrol. It is a partial taking for an easement, so that they can pump sand in and construct the sand dunes. So, it's a partial taking, which is what the Attorney General's office has told us. Not a full taking.
Okay. The other, I just want to respond to some of the comments that I've heard about a contingency case. I don't know anybody that would take this as a contingency case. The state isn't really obligated to pay legal costs back, so even if there was a successful case, I think that's wishful thinking, to look at somebody to take this on a contingency basis. But I want to thank you for having the meeting, and whatever changes can be done, at the minimum litigation cost, I think would be the best, but I really don't think it would be too successful either, but I think the plan needs to be modified, because the walks are too long with the...
15 seconds, Sam.
Connections, and, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Beth Turchi. I live on Sundar Avenue. And I kind of like to address the group behind me, but I guess I'll look at you while I'm talking to them. There's a couple, there's a few things that this body needs to know, and the first is, that the dune project was originally designed as a beach replenishment project. It was never designed as a structure that would save inland homes and properties. That's the first thing you need to know. So, why is it still alive? Because the Army Corps of Engineers and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection have the money, as one of the speakers came up earlier, said, "They have the money. They want to build it. It's their livelihoods." Will it protect inland structures? Absolutely not. Do we need it? Absolutely not. We know that. We know that from engineering studies. The bulkhead does the job. So, why are we here today? We're here today to understand that we are at a critical moment. Governor Chris Christie wants to build this dune. He doesn't care what the will of the people is. Our commissioners have said they're not going to sign the contract, but that in no way negates that we will, in fact, have to pay for repair and replenishment as this project goes further. So, what we need to decide as a community is, this is why we're here today, do we spend $100,000 now to mitigate a project that will cost this community millions of dollars over its life, over the life of this dune? And don't kid yourself, there isn't some storm that's going to come along and take it out to sea. Some storm's going to come along and develop a scarper, take away a walkway, and Margate will have to replace it. It will be a public safety issue at that point, and whether we sign a contract or not, we're going to have to maintain this thing for 50 years or longer, in perpetuity. We need to decide, look, you're all smart people, you have second homes. Do you want to spend $100,000 to save millions? Or do you want to just let this thing come on, come in, and have your taxes go up forever? And we will be funding this thing forever. Be smart with your money.
My name's Terry Fuller. I live on 12 North Osborne. I actually have more questions than comments. The first question is, if the dunes are not placed, if we win this battle, if we win this battle, my question is, what liability do we have with a future storm? Is the state or the feds going to take the position that you had your opportunity to protect your beach, you didn't take it, and now, you're on your own? So, that's question number one. My second question is, I've been listening to this debate for quite some time, and yet, I haven't seen what the plan is. It's very hard to say whether for a dune or against a dune, when I don't know exactly what the plan is. Has there been a proposal put forth? If you look around this island, as well as other islands, and for that matter, other states that are on the beaches, you find a whole variety of different types of dune-type structures. Some are far more acceptable from the objections that have been imposed here. So, I would like to know where I can see this, so that I can properly make my determination as to how I would support it or not. Thank you.
My understanding was, it was going to be on the Internet? Upload?
We have been authorized, actually.
So, he can look at the plans?
We have the plans, and we're just trying to figure out how we're going to get them to you. I think, is it on the Internet yet?
No, they're not. We're charging $65 for the plans, because that's going to cost us to print them. We do have them in the city clerk's office.
We each have a copy of plans, which we just got. We'll get them to you somehow, so you can, it's kind of comprehensive.
Are they on display somewhere? I don't mind coming...
Rosie Free's going to get one, so you can review it today while you're here.
I'll get that.
One other thing, Mayor, the most realistic way to see what it looks like is walk the Venter boardwalk. It's the same exact, that's it, dimension, height. You can actually see what one looks like.
Come on.
Good morning.
Good morning, you, sir.
My name is Martin Mantel. I'm a recent resident, seasonal resident of Margate, 126B North Jefferson. One question that is, sort of perplexes me a little bit. I'm a resident of, maybe you can tell by my accent, of New York. How do I vote here and in New York at the same time? How can I legally vote in both places for the proposal? Next thing I wanted to know...
I'll respond to that. As the law is written now, you are only allowed to vote in one place, your primary residence.
Okay.
And you know, I was very careful what I said, "As the law is written now," sir.
Right.
Mike, I have a question on that, and Tom is not here, and Rosie walked out of the room. I had an idea that maybe, would there be a way that we could set up, at each voting location, a separate booth where taxpayers could come in, sign a card, we could have a list that proves that they're homeowners and taxpayers, and take their, take their vote? Well, I mean, I...
I like that word.
I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, you know, certainly, it wouldn't be 100% foolproof, but...
I'm not against, you know, that idea. However, I don't know if it's legal. You'd have to run it by the election board and the clerk's office, I guess.
So, maybe that's something we should look into. What we were just talking about was trying to set up, in November, separate locations for taxpayers that are not residents but homeowners to record their voice in an official way, understanding that there would be an added expense to that, but could we, again, since it's a nine-binding referendum, could we get a feel for their, you know, their voice?
Related to this...
Mayor, can I interrupt you there also? I'm sorry. I don't know whether to bring this up or not. The other day, I was in the car, I believe it was Wednesday, it must have entered a little after 6:00, turned the radio on, listening to the simulcast of the local news, at which point, I heard the very last part of an interview, I guess, with Governor Christie. It is my understanding, from what little I heard, that he is looking into finding a way so that the second homeowners have a right to vote. Now, I don't know where that is going, I did not hear the whole thing, I did not see any other news coverage about it. It is something that I'm looking into, and that's what I heard. I heard him say that. So, maybe there's hope in the future for...
Yeah, because it is an issue when you consider how many people are seasonal, that is, it could swing about one way or the other. The other thing, I have a question about, since the bay caused such a problem due to Sandy, are there any specific guidelines? Is there anything now in motion, from a state level, local level, to improve that situation? Because I read, I read in the local paper that there's something on Governor Christie's, there's something on Governor Christie's table, that if we oppose this, it could, on one hand, result in not getting that consideration to improve the base situation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I still didn't hear, where is that?
He wondered if we wouldn't get money for the base.
I heard that.
Good morning, and thank you for this meeting. My name is Marsha Mulligan, at 8 South Mansfield. I have three comments to make. One, Mr. Abbott, there is no boardwalk in Margate to view the dunes from. We can go up to Venter and look at them, but you're going to be about, what, seven, eight feet higher? We don't have a boardwalk, so we're going to be in a gully, sir. The second thing is, I think the commissioners here, Mayor Becker and Ms. Taub, have created a precedent. If we can pay $273,000 for your legal fees against Mr. Hiltner without a referendum, then I think we have set a precedent that every time you want to spend money, you need a referendum from us to spend our money, because it is our money. And if we want to fight this, and we can win, anybody who says we can't win is a negative, half-empty glass. We have a one-time opportunity to go forward. Somebody's on the take in this, and it's from the top down. There are lobbyists out there... There are lobbyists out there fighting every day to put this dune in, and it's wrong. Stand up! Fight for what you think is right and know is right. Why are you screwing with our beaches and our property? And the third thing is, Mayor Becker, you created a dune, you had sand pushed up against the seawall before Sandy, and that's where all the sand in the street came from.
My name is Pat Arcuri, 8907 Monmouth Avenue, and I have to agree with one of the gentlemen before me. It's very difficult for me to come and make any type of recommendation or render an opinion without really the technical data to support it. I hear a lot of passion here, there's a lot of emotion, and quite frankly, that's a lot of what I've read. So, I have some real specific questions that I need addressed. First and foremost, maybe, I'm not a scientist, I'm certainly not an engineer, but Venter City and Longport Borough are buying into the project, okay? So, they're going to have this very defined, engineered beach. So, what happens when we get Sandy, similar storm, which, again, everybody keeps referring back to bay flooding, bay flooding, bay flooding? Well, is it not that we received the bay flooding because we were in the lower quadrant of the counterclockwise winds that was bringing the bay forward, while the north of us, because landfall hit north, Brigantine, and the real sustained winds, sustained force winds, which impact storm surge, which impact wave action, was north of us? Which is why, come on, let's look at the media, they got hit the worst from the ocean. Is that not, could somebody validate that, that the bay flooding was because of the lower quadrant winds? Does anybody know this? Is there any technical...
Basically correct. If the center of the storm had been 50 miles south, it would have been different.
Correct. So, if Sandy were to occur again, where's Storm, it's not going to be a Sandy, her name is retired. So, if she occurs again, 60, 80 miles south of where she made landfall, would we not look very similar to northern Jersey? Would we not look similar to a Seaside Heights? Okay, point taken. Second question. So, we do not participate in this project. What impact does that have on our next presidentially declared event? How does that affect federal and state funding into the city of Margate? How does that affect, I'm positive you received funding for our infrastructure, to rebuild your city hall, to do our streets, to do our sanitation? So, now, we do not participate, where does that funding come from in our next event? Could someone answer me that? What happens to the state funding? Okay, these are the kinds of questions, quite frankly, and in all due respect, I need this information for me to be able to come up and to say what my opinion is. Lastly, how does that affect our community rating system in a flood insurance program? Anybody know that? So, will everybody's flood insurance rates rise?
No.
Okay. So, I have a lot of questions, and like I said, I can be passionate, I could have emotion, but I need facts for me to be able to render an opinion. And of course, let me finish this by, I'm closed by saying, I'm a seasonal resident, and I guess it really doesn't matter much, but quite frankly, I do think that all the full-time residents should want these questions addressed. These are very critical, important. And last but not least, getting back to not being an engineer...
15 seconds, Sam.
Not being an engineer. So, if Venter and Longport participate in this, do, does, and we have a sustained, sizable storm, do we become the funnel? Does all the water just funnel into Margate? Is there a study that says what is going to be the impact? I don't know. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to having this kind of information. Thank you.
Let me thank you for having this meeting. My name is Walter Trowani. I live at 37 North Clermont, and I don't want to get into the debate, should we or shouldn't we have the dunes, because I think that's kind of irrelevant.
Stand closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. What's relevant now is, what do we do? But let me make a comment on the first person, the letter was read into the record. That person made two points. One is that it would cost a million dollars, and I think that's very true. And the second point was that the flooding we encountered was from the bay, not from the ocean, and I think the previous speaker got it right. We were very fortunate that the storm hit where it did. Had it hit to the south, we would look like Seaside Heights, we would look like Ocean and Monmouth Counties, and we would have been devastated, and so, I would draw very little comfort from what we have. The point we have now is, where do we go? And I think the fact that we see these small amounts for attorneys, which are actually laughable, $3,000 for an engineer, I'm not sure what you get that, they write the answer on a napkin. I mean, that's ridiculous. And so, I think what we're talking about is spending an enormous amount of money. There's no point to do this. You have three separate attorneys telling you that your chances of winning are somewhere between slim and none, mostly leaning towards the none. And so, there's no, there's no magic bullet here. You don't have the technical facts on your side, and you don't have the legal facts on your side, because the governor has it within his authority to order the dunes. So, I think we should consider that we're wasting money, and people say it's a small investment. Well, I still think a half million to a million dollars is a lot of money. I see very worthwhile projects that need to be done in this community that will not be done by spending a million dollars on a cause that will not succeed. Our only hope is that the courts will rule very quickly, and that this thing will be resolved, and we'll have to proceed, just as it was, and our legal fees, our engineering fees will be rather small in comparison to going on forever and ever. The second thing is, consider this, that Governor Christie, I'm sure, is of this Bobby Kennedy school that says, "Don't get mad, get even." And so, we turn down this grant, we fight the governor in court. I think you can be sure that the governor, the DEP, and the Corps of Engineers is not going to look favorably when we have other requests for projects, either for parks, or for maybe preventing flooding on the bayside. So, I think those are things that you should consider. And then, the third thing is, we will lose control of the beaches to a great extent. And so, I would just say that this board should consider that, rather than pursuing a, you know, I know you want to be faithful to the public who voted the majority to fight this, but I think the fact is, the fight is useless, you're not going to win, and so, we should just cut our losses and just try and do the best we can and work with the other agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Stephen Earl Wallmeyer, at 114 South Barclay in Margate. Couple comments. First of all, is this videotaped this meeting?
No.
I think it would be, I don't, do you, do you have an idea how many, first of all, how many, how many citizens are there in Margate?
Primary home population?
No, total. No, total.
I don't have any.
Sixty-five hundred, one hundred and five thousand is the sum.
Okay. So, there are probably a lot of people that aren't New Jersey residents here, would we say? I think it would be helpful, we do collect $21 million in real estate taxes, to have this, these meetings broadcast on YouTube or a local channel that we could pick up outside of this area, because many of us don't know when these meetings are being held and what's being discussed at these meetings. Do you think we could do that?
I think the meeting schedule is on the website, is it not? And they're all advertised.
Okay, but could we have?
You can listen to it online.
Could we have this meeting taped and put on YouTube? So everyone could watch it? The meetings are?
The audio is being?
The audio of the meetings is on the website. You can listen to these meetings. You can see it, but you can hear. In most communities today, you can see these meetings on the local television network.
Mr. Obama, it's something we talked about previously, and there were some technical difficulties that were involved, because I believe the equipment that we need is in the old city hall, so it's something that's probably going to get done in the future. I don't know exactly.
That would be great. The subject was brought up about, you know, some attorney taking this case like contingency. What are they going to get if we win? A bucket of sand? I mean, it's a joke. I mean, for anyone to bring that up is just beyond. I don't know if anybody's aware, but a couple of meetings ago, Mark Rubin presented us with some information that is readily available on the internet, a report in April 2014 from the Army Corps of Engineers. This report says that the best possible way to stop a storm surge is the bulkhead, not the dunes. I would suggest you all take a look at that, because that's pretty important, because they're saying one thing and doing another. And I think that's a little perplexing. Again, the vote that was taken, which was a non-binding referendum of the New Jersey citizens that live here, two out of three voters were against the dunes. If you add in the non-residents, the number must be staggering. So we're hearing, the people that are for the dunes are well in the minority, and it is worth the fight. If you, if you, if you recall that the taxes, what's going to happen with taxes if these dunes come in? Property values are going to go down. The appeal of our beaches and visitors is going to go down. And who's going to pay? Are we going to, we're going to lower taxes, either others who have lower taxes, their taxes are going to increase, or there's going to be less services? And I don't?
Fifteen seconds, Mr. Obama.
So I think you should do several.
My mic went bad. Thank you, thank you very much.
Commissioner Blumberg, you said you're in charge of making sure we have enough money. So if we think our taxes are too high, do we come speak to you?
No, you'd have to speak to the tax man.
And that would be?
I can't give out his name now.
Okay. All right. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Blumberg. He has stood with the people from the beginning of this project. I had the bad news first and the good news second. Commissioner Taub has been for the project, and in respect for her views, she has been steadfast, she thinks, or at least she has said that she believes that the dunes are the right protection for the beach. The mayor hasn't really said one way or the other, except let me get the voice of the people, and then now let's get the voice of the people again. I find it frustrating, both as a taxpayer and also as a voter, that we don't get information. Often, the mayor and Commissioner Taub says, "Call this number." Mayor will say, "Come down to the hardware store." But you don't answer our questions in public. And so what's out there is a lot of misinformation. I've been to meetings and meetings and meetings, and people who are afraid of this project for cost purposes keep bringing up information that has already been out there. And it's frustrating that you don't, you have a responsibility. People assume, because you're a commissioner, that what information you put out there is accurate. Like, are insurance rates going to go up? No, they're not going to go up. Is FEMA not going to cover? Are we going to have liability? All those questions have been answered. They were answered by Margate citizens questioning the beach project, but they were answered with the officials, and they were given to the city. It should have been the city giving it to us. Has the city put out all the tax ramifications of doing the dunes versus challenging it? No. If people are concerned about costs, and that's the deciding factor in here, we need that information. We need to know, what are our extra costs in maintenance? What are our extra costs in police patrols? What are our estimated tax appeal costs? What are the costs of the attorneys that are going to have to fight, or challenge, or represent the city in these? There's a whole host of costs. It's also extremely frustrating. There are other communities where they have bulkheads and dunes, like Brigantine, or Wildwood, where it doesn't make sense. And, Mayor, you have given up numerous opportunities to sit down with the Army Corps and the DEP and say, "You're doing some other things in other communities. You're building seawalls, you're raising things. We want to work with you. We want to negotiate." You gave them the green light since February. Commissioner Blumberg, meeting after meeting, "Let's write a letter, let's talk to them, let's have a communication." And now, at the 11th hour, we're in a position where you're pitting the city and the residents against the state, and that's never a good thing. I wish I had my glasses on. Commissioner Taub, you talk about three groups, they're not equal groups, they're not educated, they have misinformation. Mayor Becker, you said there's no financial commitment going forward. You need to explain that, because that's really not true. You're leaving these people as mayor, saying there's no financial commitment going forward, and that's just not accurate. Why are we getting a plan now? Where was the plan when we were supposed to take a look at it as a community, like Wildwood had that opportunity? And have they addressed our issues? Have they addressed drainage? Commissioner Blumberg shaking his head, "No." Have they addressed access? In a February letter, after the meeting with, you know who that was at the meeting, Commissioner Martin, Bob Martin, said, "I assure you that we will just take care of those issues." But you never, ever responded back. So why should he bother? I don't blame him. This is not about money. This is about politics. And I understand the position, I understand, I understand the position you're in, but we shouldn't have to go and fight the state now. We should have negotiated. Thank you.
Francesca Di Cosmo, 29 North Decatur. Just a couple of quick questions, as I try to put together what I'm hearing here. Number one, was there ever a public meeting where the state DEP and the Corps of Engineers and the city of Margate and its interested residents was held?
Yes, there was.
Okay. And there was one, I attempted to have another one, but the commission didn't want to have that one before the referendum. And I am really sorry that we didn't have that, because at that meeting, everybody would have been able to ask the DEP and the Army Corps questions and heard directly from them.
Right. Because it sounds to me like there is a little conflicting information about dunes versus seawall, the effectiveness of dunes and so on. I mean, I would personally disagree with a lot of what I'm hearing here about the dunes. And it just makes me think that, as a very basic start, why wouldn't everyone understand about the dunes and how they work, how they're constructed? So that's, made me wonder, did anyone ever really have, give the people a chance to talk to the Corps directly, and the state, to get a broader understanding of how each one of these options works, so that you can make an informed decision about what's best for the city? So is there minutes available from that first meeting with the Corps and the state?
Yes, there is.
So good, that's good. So we can go back and look at that and at least understand what they said then.
You can, you can listen to the, if you want to call the clerk's office on?
And you can listen to the?
One day, and I'll tell you the date, and you can just listen to it.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. My next question resolve is regarding the wall. Hearing from some folks that they actually feel that the seawall is a better option, and that it's cost that's maybe not bringing that option to the fore, or that the only money that the state has is for a doon, there is no money for a wall. Am I hearing that right?
As the mayor said, there was a cost benefit analysis done, and the Corps determined that the nourishment and the dunes were the best bang for the buck, if you will. But there is a shore protection project, I think we all have it, that we can probably share with the public, that, that it explains the alternatives that were studied and why they decided on this one.
I think this is a key piece of information. I think just as, trying to be an person? Yes, please do.
Commissioner Taub is absolutely correct. There is, I don't know where it is, there is a copy of a report put out by the Corps of Engineers that has been out for a long time, which discusses everything that they looked at, all the different bulkheads.
This is an environmental impact assessment?
No, that, that wasn't.
Yes, that's perfect.
Let's talk about the different types of options, jetties, things like that, and why they were good, why they were bad, and why they chose what they did, which is the doon project. We'll try and find it. Rosie, do you have that, do you have a copy of that?
That's a key report. And I just want to interject. This study that Mike and Brenda are talking about had nothing to do with Margate specifically. So they never looked at Margate. No, no one has ever come to Margate, to the best of my knowledge, and seen that we have bulkheads and walls at every street end, in front of every property. Vender doesn't have it, Longport doesn't have it, Atlantic City didn't have it. I'm glad that he said that, because I'm asking about Margate, so I mean, I think that's one. But this, the studies that, that are being referred to here, never looked at Margate, never. The governor has never, to my knowledge, set his feet on Margate beaches and looked at what we have here in Margate. Okay. So there was never really an environmental impact assessment or an environmental impact study for Margate?
Not for Margate.
Okay. And there's never been an engineering study that looked at wall versus doon for Margate? That is correct. And in addition to that, one other, one other misconception, I just want to clarify, because I've taken a lot of notes, but it's your meeting. The plans that we're talking about, that we're going to show you, that are here, absolutely still do not address three of the biggest issues that we have here in Margate. Number one is drainage. All of our beach block streets drain toward the beach. They have no plan specific that addresses how that water gets away from between the bulkhead and the dunes. Number two, the current plans that we have have four handicap accesses to all our 40 beaches, four. The third issue that I have are related to the same issues that you all have, the long-term cost of these dunes, what impact that's going to have on the taxpayers of Margate, and that hasn't been addressed as well. Okay, thank you very much. And the last question I have is, with respect to the seawall that folks seem to be mentioning here, and maybe you don't have the answer right now, but I'm going to assume that the height of the existing seawalls that you're talking about are insufficient. Would that be correct? It's real, and I would say that that's really a matter of opinion, in my opinion, no. During this superstorm, this 100-year storm that we had, our bulkheads more or less stood up, you know, stood to the challenge. And again, somebody said it, the fact of the matter is, the majority of the damage and the money that we spent was on cleanup, because for 50 years, we've had a policy of protecting our bulkheads by piling sand up against them. And so what happened was, because of the velocity of this storm, the water took all that sand that we piled up in front of the bulkheads and washed it onto our beach blocks. And that's where we spent a majority of our money cleaning up that sand. I can understand that, because the sand was not protected by vegetation, so washed away. Well, it was just a ramp right in front of our bulkheads, so the water came up and it took it. And so, and I don't mean to be flippant about this, but I, there's one, one thing that I've heard. Right, because you're using my time. I'm sorry. No, 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 the mayor will give you extra time. But I wanted to make this.
The mayor has given you extra time.
Because, you know, for months now, I've been listening to, and it's okay, I've been listening to if, what if? And I hear people say, "What if we have another 100-year storm? And what if that 100-year storm happens to be centered 50 miles north of us? And what if the wind is such that the bay and the ocean and the stars and the moon are aligned? And we are, in fact, the target of that perfect storm? Those dunes that we're talking about will be washed away in 20 minutes." Now, I can tell you that the bulkheads behind them will still be there, and all the money that we spent for those dunes will be washed away with them, if that 100-year storm. I would have to say, though, in terms of planning for emergencies and these kinds of issues, the 100-year situation is a what-if, but it's not necessarily the daily situation or the more frequent occurrence of lesser storms, and that's the thing you have to plan for. So while it's good to look at the 100-year flood, of course, and that's what a lot of the flood insurance and flood situations look at, there's the 25-year flood, there's the 50-year flood, so it's not just about the 100 thing, and you have to consider that. The seawall, so to be, so an engineering study on the effectiveness of the current seawall has not been done. Is that correct?
Not for Margate. It's a chance.
Not for Margate. I'm just talking about Margate, not the rest of the world. Okay. So we don't know if the existing seawall is effective in terms of issues with global climate change, increasing sea levels, and other more frequent, high-intensity storms? We do not in fact know that.
We do not.
Okay. So would it behoove us to have a better understanding of those situations? In terms of a decision-making process?
Absolutely.
And if that existing seawall is not high enough, how high would that seawall have to go? We don't know.
We do not know.
Right. And does that not become an issue for certain residents on the beachfront?
Absolutely.
Okay? I mean, everybody's talking about the seawall as an option, and maybe it is. It sounds like we don't really know how viable the seawall option is at this point. Seawall versus doon. But the seawall would have to be a certain height, and that too may be objectionable to some people.
I had to tell you your time's up.
Yeah, okay.
Fairness, everyone.
But those are questions that I have, and we appreciate answers to those. Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Mayor, may Commissioner Blumberg respond? Can I make a response to the last speaker? The plans are over here, and I hope everybody will take a look at them. The dune height is 11.75, and it's my understanding it's a couple of feet less than what Atlantic Cities are, if that makes a difference to anybody. Seawalls have been brought up, and I was curious, too, because people that I respect have brought them up. So I asked Dr. Ken Miller, he's an MIT engineer who works out of Rutgers, what he thought of seawalls, or I think they're also called groins. And he said that, in his opinion, based on his studies, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul with the sand. There was one put up at Barnegat, and what happened was the sand disappeared from Island Beach State Park. And so, part of the Island Beach State Park disappeared. Whether that would work the same for Margate, I don't know. And yes, Commissioner Blumberg is correct. We need to address drainage and pooling, and it's my understanding that that hasn't been done yet. The Army Corps is supposed to reach out to our engineer and review that. And some people keep saying that it's going to cost millions to keep this project down the road. And there's no commitment whatsoever from the city to pay for any future nourishments. If we need one, then I guess we would have to pay for it. But everybody knows that we get the sand from the north, so we may not be...
Please be respectful, folks.
And seawall is rising. So the speaker before us did bring up, I think, some very important things that we need to consider to all make an intelligent decision. And that's all. Thanks.
Okay.
Good morning. Seth Lehr from 109 South Oregon. Thanks for having a meeting this morning. A couple of things, just factual. The woman who mentioned seaside heights, seaside heights has neither a dune nor a bulkhead, and that's why they had as much damage as they had. They have neither. Couple things. When is the project supposed to begin?
I'm sorry.
When is the dune project supposed to begin?
Last April.
So we don't have a definitive date?
The most recent was beginning of September, which they told, they told me maybe four months ago. We requested that they not be anywhere near our beaches. They said maybe the end of September. I don't think that's a realistic thing. I would have no idea. I wish I could give you, you know, some information, but I just don't have it.
Hey, Mike, if I could interrupt, and this is a question that I had, and I think I have it for you. And I just heard last night that on Thursday afternoon, our bathers were asked on Brunswick Avenue to leave the water because the Army Corps was in doing studies. Does, do you know anything about that?
I have no knowledge of that at all.
So there was no...
And that happened Thursday?
Okay, so you, so...
Go ahead, sir. Sorry to interrupt.
We're here. You didn't know?
If that's the case, if 90% of the beach is owned by the township, have they proceeded with condemnation proceedings against our beaches?
Not at this point.
And they cannot build until they do, until they control the beach, correct?
Yes.
And we've agreed that we will not give them access to our beaches, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing is, if we have a referendum in November to support funding opposition to the project, and if we thought it would begin in September, how would that work? How would it work to fund opposition with a referendum in November if you all think there's a chance this could begin in September?
Well, that, I don't think that's going to happen, number one. Number two, the law firm that we hired on Thursday has assured us that should something happen between now and that referendum, they will be prepared to seek immediate and jump to relief.
Great. The other thing is, I'd like to understand, and you know, we've created the Margate Citizens Questioning the Beach Project non-for-profit organization. When you put out the referendum, I'd love to understand what exact words you would use, because if the referendum simply says, will you be willing to fund something that costs between $30,000 and over $1 million, I think that's a pretty negative reaction you'll get. But if you contrast that with what it might cost to support the dunes over a 40-year period of time, give people true options to understand if you do this versus this, what it might be, that might be more helpful. So I think how the referendum is worded will elicit a specific response, and we would love to be part of helping you craft that language.
That has already been done. The referendum had to be to the county clerk last week. That is done. The wording is already done, complete.
Can you give us a sense of what, Mr. Abbott, you probably know the wording, you might have drafted it. Could you give us a sense of the wording?
Resolution is in writing. I believe the resolution is available online. If not, our city clerk can give you a copy of the precise wording.
But does it say more like "I'm fearful of" than "than not"? Does it specify?
I'll let you draw your own conclusions after you read it.
Maybe, Rosie, maybe you could get us a copy of that before the end of the meeting. Rosie will get us a copy of that, and she can put it up on the front table.
And that sort of gets to my second-to-last point, which is, you all seem to know a whole lot more than we do. We are really seeking information. We've consistently been seeking information. We're concerned, residents, landowners, voters. And yet, it's so hard to find. And I can tell you how much beach tags are. I can tell you when you're having a festival down by the bay. I can tell you all the things that matter, but not as much as this, and you can't find this. You guys published the opinions of council that were obviously very negative inflammatory opinions instantly. Commissioner Toby, once you heard that people were questioning, you said, oh, I'll put those out.
Wait, stop. I can't let that one go. Inflammatory?
I think so. Because when people hear...
Have you read the opinions?
Absolutely thoroughly, multiple times.
You haven't, if you're calling them inflammatory.
Well, when the conclusion is, it's not worth fighting.
We pick the attorney that the anti...
I think I was talking first. When someone else said that you paid $3,000 for an opinion, and we're supposed to say that that is a great opinion? You get what you paid for?
We didn't pay $3,000. But the attorney who wrote the opinion, one of them, was picked by the anti-dune group. So how you can say his opinion, Mr. Goldschur's opinion, is inflammatory. See, that's one of the problems. You come up, sir, you come up and say you want information. And it's great to give information out. But as soon as you go, everybody goes on this attack. They get very emotional. And they, and like, I couldn't even say to one gentleman, what will these dunes look like? Well, sir, if you go out and look at the Venter ones, that's what they'll look like in Margate. That warrants a snide remark. So when you say you want information, if we could tone down the rhetoric and try to be fair and courteous to each other, I think you'd get a lot more information. There's a lot of information...
Fair point. I do not think I was being this courteous. But I'll also say, when you say that we don't know how we're going to take away the water from the streets, we don't know how they're going to be maintained, we don't know the cost. But when one of our commissioners is emphatically in support of it, not conditionally, but emphatically in support, it makes us all wonder, what information do you have that we don't have that would allow you to draw such a conclusive opinion? I'd love to have the information. We would love to have it. That's why we're all here. Maybe we should have a meeting where you could actually say, we're going to bring all the information we have. We'll have the room open for a certain number of hours. Let residents come in and see it. Put it on the website. Do something.
We certainly do. It's all kind of, can I, I think your time is up. I don't know. It's starting already. It's a very unique situation here, right? This commission, and I'm going to defend this commission now. When asked for legal opinions, spent the money to get two legal opinions, okay? We didn't like those legal opinions, so now we're asked for more things. At every step, I'm going to make it special, whatever the public has asked, we have supported. Last Thursday, we have committed unanimously to oppose the project. I don't understand where the ranker comes from. I mean, we're all in this together. You know, all these personal comments should stop. If we can't be decent and respectful to one another, then we've really had a problem here in Margate. Everything has been asked for, has been gotten. We are now unanimous. And as we move forward, just for information only, you talk about information, the firm that we hire is headed by Rob Andrews, former congressman, state of New Jersey, who also said in private conversation that there's no way we would win a lawsuit. We're not going for a lawsuit. We're trying, he wants to try another method. You know, he talks about expanding, broadening our options, starting a conciliatory process, see if it works, build consensus. These are the kinds of positive things that he's talking about, and he's going to propose. But the bottom line is that we're in this together. We're not on opposite sides of the fence here. We unanimously agree to move ahead with this. Why can't we work together to get something done?
Thank you very much. One last point. My understanding is, as long as two of three of the commissioners will not sign anything that will allow condemnation of the land, that never in the history of the state of New Jersey has the state seized lands from a township or sovereign entity that's been opposed to it. It would be precedent. Could they? Sure. They never have. And then when we talk about whether this fight is worth it or not, that can be the essence of the issue. There's lots of other issues that are either legal or political that can be part of this fight. So in no way is this a lost battle at all. I would say that the battle really hasn't even been formulated as to what the opposition, except the state has never seized land from a township before. And Mayor, thank you very, very much for your time.
Sir, once again, this is, we don't feel this is a lost battle. We have just approved to move forward again unanimously. Okay?
And I'm saying as much for the people behind me as for you. Thank you very much for your time.
And Seth, I just want to say that both I and the mayor are on record saying that we will not sign those easements.
I'm just confirming why so...
Mike, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I recall that we've said multiple times that we are not signing over our property. Is that correct?
I sat face to face with the commissioner. I told him we will not sign a contract, we will not commit. We will not, I sat face to face with the deputy attorney general of the state of New Jersey, and when he asked about the easements, I said, I will never sign the easements to give you...
Thank you.
That has been told for the last six months. That has not changed. That will never change.
And that is by far the most important issue that we have, from which to be able to oppose a battle. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the former speaker. Seth, I'm sorry, what was, what's your last name?
Lehr.
Mr. Lehr. We do need to share, we do need to share information. And in the very beginning, the people against the project asked all of us to answer questions that they put out to us. I spent an hour and a half on a conference call with the Army Corps and the DEP answering those questions. I had them hand-delivered to your meeting, and either Val or Mr. Gottlieb, Mr. Roy or Mr. Gottlieb, said that they couldn't be passed out because they hadn't reviewed them yet. I mean, we can't censor information. And that's the honest-to-goodness truth. So sharing of information really does go both ways. Thank you.
My name's Stephen Allen from 9 North Sumner in Margate.
What's your last name, please?
Allen, A-L-L-E-N.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I am not here to continue the circumlocuitous processes that have gone on here of people pro or for. I am not here to rally rail pro or for the dunes. My concern is, and an offer was made, a very kind offer was made by one of the commissioners about 30 minutes ago, that we would have some type of referendum, and it was a very nice offer, that they would have it in Margate on election day, and perhaps a parallel voting system. I think that's a great offer, but it's somewhat hollow offer. I think it was well-intended. I think if we're really talking about a public referendum, I think some type of public referendum should be held. Home addresses, primary addresses for all the people who have secondary homes here, I'm sure are available or could be available. And I think some type of public referendum should be held that, in fact, allows all the people to vote, not being forced to come down to Margate. I think it was well-intentioned, but I think it's almost another attempt, although blind, at some voter suppression, really. And I think, you know, I don't think that's where you want to go at this point. I think, you know, this is the fundamental working unit of democracy, of representative democracy. We're here at a town meeting. We want, we would like to share our opinions with our elected and appointed officials. And I think, you know, it's making progress. But I think, as I look around the room at the people my age, it looks like we all grew up in the 60s. You know, like it or not, we all grew up in the 60s.
I was putting you at 45. I'm sorry. I said, I was putting you at 45.
Right. And, you know, I think it's well-intended to have all this money spent to fight the dunes or to support the dunes. I mean, that doesn't really matter. But the fact comes in, we do have a say. And it may not be, our avenue may not be through the courts necessarily. It may be through the court of public opinion. And the reality is, there are plenty of residents in Margate who are not in support of the dunes. And I would find it really, I think money would be well-spent if, in fact, the dune project does go through. I would find the cover of the New York Times, you know, a pretty good public venue to show them having to move mothers and grandmothers and children and husbands and families who are standing there against the dunes and sitting on the beaches against the dunes. I think that would really reflect a significant amount of, you know, it would buy a lot of capital in the press.
15 seconds, Mr. Allen.
Okay, well, I'm finished. But I think it's time for the people to really react and, you know, just, you know, do what they want to do and support the project or not support the project.
Thank you very much.
Glen Clotts, 118 North Barclay Avenue. I'm a full-time resident of Margate. Probably going to get myself in trouble right from the start here with all our summer residents. But I want to address the question of voting, all right? I think it just muddies the water. We're not going to change the Constitution here, okay? I think it's okay to find out what our summer residents and taxpayers think on this topic. But, you know, as far as voting goes, there's an easy answer. You just come down here and register here for this particular period. If it's that important, a vote, okay? I know many people that have done that. They did it in Venter. When there was an election in Venter, they came down and they registered and they voted. And then they went back to where their other home was, and they re-registered there. So I think it just muddies the water, okay? As far as the constitutional, the voting side of this, we're not going to, we're not going to change the Constitution. Right now, that's the way it is. And I don't think we're going to fight that battle. So I just wanted to address that. And I know that doesn't please everybody, but that's the way the law is right now, and the Constitution is. I want to address, though, one of the issues that comes up over and over here. I don't want to refight the whole dune battle. I think we did that last year. Residents, voters said they don't want to do it. We all know that. I'm not going to go there. But there's, there's a thing that keeps coming up, and I want to address it because I don't think we're hearing both sides. There's a lot of people out here that say if the storm, you know, the speculator, there's all this speculation. If the storm came onshore where it was supposed to that day in Delaware Bay, we would have ended up like what happened in the north. Maybe, and maybe not. Actually, we'll never know. But here's what I think. If you look at the record and you go through storms all over the country, there's examples, there actually are examples where a storm like Sandy or bigger, and I'll give you one right here, Ivan, I think it was in 2004, you can check, down in the Gulf, huge hurricane, 180 on our winds, came on the beach in Pensacola, Florida. They had just built an army project, very much like the one that was built in Atlantic City and Venter. Well, that project, in that storm, it was an enormous storm. It was not a category-one hurricane, had a huge storm surge, took that entire project and put it into the homes behind it and destroyed them. Okay? And it's quite a story. It's not the only example. Ugo took a natural system.
15 seconds.
Took a natural system and wiped that out. So I think it's, you know, it's fair to say that had Sandy, you know, come onshore down there, it might have taken the system in Atlantic City and put that into the casinos. So I don't, I don't see where we can just say, you know, dunes are going to protect us in every instance. us in every instance. No, I think it's been proven quite the contrary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Harris, 104 North Huntington. I am a seasonal resident. And I think, I might disagree with the previous speaker, but I think what this has, and I don't want to talk for or against, but the whole process has raised issues of inequality with regard to the seasonal residents. And I think the offer that you made with regard to having a separate voting avenue for resident, not for seasonal residents, is an interesting one, but you are elected by the people who vote. And are you saying to us today that as seasonal residents, that what we say, regardless of what the outcome might be, is something that you, as the commissioners, would listen to as opposed to if it's different than what the voters say? I think you have to think about what you're offering and what your position's going to be, because if it's an empty vote, it means nothing to the seasonal residents. If you want to make access for the seasonal residents to vote, because we might have to vote in New York or Pennsylvania on Voting Day, then there's the internet, which would allow the opportunity for seasonal residents to have input, to have everybody to have input, quite frankly. So if we're looking for some sort of consensus, because I keep hearing there was a vote, and there was, there was a vote of the registered voters, but if we're looking for input from the seasonal residents, then that is not anything that has been discussed, that is not anything that has factored into any of the decision-making, and if we're now trying to do that, it might be too little, too late. I applaud the effort. But I think if you want to do it, try and do it in an effective manner and also let us know, doesn't really mean anything. If the seasonal voters vote one way and the registered voters vote another way, what does the commission do? I think you have to think about these issues if you're going to try and make a meaningful input for the seasonal residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is Judy Friedman, 16 North Gladstone Avenue. I grew up here and I am now a seasonal resident, so my love and passion for Margate is very deep. I'm trying to conceptualize what the dunes is going to look like, but I've read so much controversial and different information that I'm having a hard time, so I have a couple of questions. How high are the dunes supposed to be?
12. 12.75 feet above sea level. Give you some perspective, the beaches themselves are between five and seven feet. 12.75 feet above sea level.
Okay. Because I had heard 25 feet as well.
No.
So.
No.
Okay. So are they planning on, are they planning on doing beach replenishment as well or no?
Yes, yes.
And how far is that?
200 feet.
So how does that impact the Margate Pier, the fishing pier?
They have agreed to extend the Margate Fishing Pier in principle.
Okay. So my question then becomes, if Margate decides not to do the dunes and Atlantic City and Ventnor and Longport do do the dunes, then you have the beach line going, I'll do it this way for you, Atlantic City, Ventnor, Margate, Longport. So what happens with the tides or a storm with that inside of that sea, if you will?
I understand what you're saying, but I'm not able to answer that at this point. But I understand your point.
Perhaps that would be a question for the coastal engineer?
Absolutely.
Right. It's just a question to be asked, the impact of that. And in terms of beach replenishment, I remember several years ago when Atlantic City and Ventnor did coastal replenishment and Margate did not, and so you walked along the beach and, you know, Atlantic City, Ventnor, and then Margate, you know, you had to really go in to get to Margate's beach. And within a year or two, there was no demarcation, all the extra sand from Atlantic City and Ventnor went into Wildwood, I believe. So I'm not sure if we lose all that extra sand of beach replenishment, which historically we have had, and then you have the dunes that will be taking that much more space, do our beaches then become, especially at high tide, that much shorter? Those are just things to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Daniel Gottlieb, 407 North Nassau Avenue. As one of the founding members of the Margate Citizens Questioning the Beach Project, I can assure everyone that our group was established for the sole purpose of providing factual information about the project, since that information was not forthcoming from any other source, including the Army Corps of Engineers, the DEP, or the city of Margate. Initially, our role was to be a resource to Margate voters, an outlet for information that would help them make an informed decision about the project. It was only, only after we began peeling back the layers and understanding the negative implications of the project that we took on an advocacy role as well as a resource one. I think to say that our approach was there would be an understatement. We undertook extensive research. We spoke with coastal engineers. We went to other towns' beaches to observe their protection mechanisms and beach topography. We submitted our own requests for cleanup costs and building permits associated with Sandy. We ran future value calculations for costs associated with renourishment cycles over a 50-year period. We studied the contracts that the Army Corps and the DEP had in other coastal communities and the ones they had proposed for us. Above all, we strived for accuracy. If we couldn't verify our information, we didn't disseminate it. The hundreds of hours we spent on this fact-finding mission and information sharing was a painstaking and intensive process. It was undertaken out of a deep love and appreciation for our beautiful beach and a desire to ensure that it afforded the best and most cost-effective form of production. It was an enormous investment of time and energy that frankly, we would have preferred it been done for us rather than by us. But that wasn't going to happen. Someone needed to ensure that Margate voters had the facts and information necessary to make an informed decision. I'm proud that we spearheaded that worthwhile effort. I'm grateful for the appreciative remarks we've received from our fellow citizens for having done so. I didn't really want to get into, I had a couple of questions that I was hoping that because it is a public meeting, maybe we could get answered. But because Commissioner Toddby has decided to bring up an issue that happened back in October, that perhaps maybe is not an accurate portrayal of exactly what happened, I thought I might just take 20 seconds to refresh people's recollection.
You have 30 seconds, Allen.
On October 10th, I don't think I've had three minutes, Mayor.
You have.
On October 10th, 2013, we asked 25 questions to the commission. We submitted them in writing. I have the emails. We got input from the public on the questions they wanted answered. We written, in writing, we asked for a response by October 25th, 2013, in time for Margate Citizens Questioning the Beach Project to present the responses at our October 29th, 2013 public meeting that we organized, paid for, and put a lot of time into our presentation. A deadline reminder was sent to the commission, and here's the outcome. Mayor Becker did not respond. Blumberg responded prior to the deadline with candid and forthright responses. Commissioner Toddby missed our deadline. She delivered her answers directly to our meeting 10 minutes before it started, did not give us the opportunity to review her questions that we wanted to submit to the public to make sure they were accurate and that they were accurate responses. After we looked at those, there was some accuracy and there was some inaccuracy. She came to our meeting and handed them out to people as they were leaving.
Dan, 15 seconds now.
We are all within the process, Mayor. Where are we right now? Have you seen any condemnation notices go out, Solicitor Abbott? Do you know of any homeowners?
I can't hear. I can't understand.
I can't understand.
You're speaking so close, I can't make out what you're saying.
I'm sorry. Have you seen or heard of any condemnation notices or any notices or heard of any process that's begun by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Jersey DEP to start condemning property?
No, just, just many, many months ago, the initial letter from an appraiser, I think it was. That's all I'm aware of.
Okay. And finally, I think people should look into the background of Congressman Andrews. I'm sure he's a fine attorney. He definitely had an ethics issue in Congress and he resigned in disgrace from Congress. I think we should take a look at that. I think people should look at the New York Times op-ed piece that appeared in yesterday's New York Times. And I think when you finish reading that, and this will be my last remark and then I will sit down, I think when you finish reading that article, you'll see that the Army Corps of Engineers has a hammer in its toolbox. And every project to the Army Corps of Engineers looks like a nail. Thank you.
Just to clear the record, Congressman Andrews sort of felt that that question might come up. He has said for me to remind the people that all charges were dropped, so for what that's worth. Dan?
Jeff Kaplan, 110 South Osborne. We are summer residents since 1991. We certainly have a town divided, so what I'm hearing today is for and against, for and against. And what I'd like to hear is, what's the right solution for Margate? In the world of for and against, I am for the fight and against the dunes. But what I'm really for is a good outcome for this town. And what I don't want to see is a paper tiger behind a minimal legal effort that looks like an initiative to stop the dunes that fails. So what I'd like for Margate, besides a united commission and residents that can put all their efforts behind a winning solution, I'd like winning to be winning or losing to be winning. And I think Sharon Simon put it well, it's become political. And in the world of politics, you know, cities tend to lose to states. And, you know, David took down Goliath, but I don't want to rely on those odds. So Plan A is 65% vote. We've enlisted you to fight the fight. $200,000 over 50 years is $4,000 a year. We should fight that all day for the good of the residents and for the good of Margate. But, 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 if there's a chance that we can't prevail in that outcome, what I'd really like from this commission and from this town is a Plan B. Because as Dan said, in a hammer or nail situation, the Fed and the state, they always have one solution. Margate's a different town. Margate has bulkheads. Margate has different drainage. Margate had a different experience during Sandy. What I'd like someone to tell me, what I'd like to enlist this group to do is to tell the state and to tell the DEP that we might be entitled to a different solution. Wildwood's different. We have a bulkhead. You want to come in and dump sand? Fine, make our beaches longer. We have a bulkhead. We don't need dunes. Maybe there's a solution that can engage the Army Corps of Engineers, that can satisfy the state, that actually works for Margate and doesn't just dump dunes as not just the hammer to the nail. So what I'd like to see from the commission is, what are those alternatives? What are those solutions? So if we're not winning the fight, we can still get to the right answer, because the right answer for Margate is different than the answer for every other town on this 130-mile coastline. We do agree with that. We know that's right. And we need to do better as a town and commission in coming up with the right solution for Margate, and it doesn't have to be dunes.
Hi, I'm Mark Rubin. I live at 117 South Osborne Avenue. Couple of things. This project was started by the Army Corps of Engineers as a beach replenishment project, which was basically funded to replace beaches which were destroyed by Sandy. That was the whole idea of the beach replenishment project. Our beaches were not destroyed by Sandy. Why we're involved in this at all is beyond me. I submitted to this commission and every single member up here has a copy of my report from the Army Corps of Engineers dated April 2014, which clearly states, and it was made for New Jersey beaches, it clearly states that the best protection against storm surges are seawalls and bulkheads, not dunes. And every one of you has a copy of this report. It clearly states that dunes are nice for the environment but do not protect us against storms. That the best protection we already have, and that is now public knowledge forever. That is an April 2014 statement. That, that report was made four months ago? Five months ago?
I think we should make sure that Mr. Andrews has a copy of that.
I handed them out at the last meeting and I offered you.
Right. That's something that he should say, because that could be a bargaining tool.
Excuse me?
Mr. Andrews is helping us in a conciliatory way, look at other options, so that, if he were to, he should have that.
Well, that's not an option. That's a statement by the Army Corps of Engineers. The same Army Corps of Engineers who told us in the meeting that we had with them that the dunes would last no longer than 45 minutes if we had a storm similar to Sandy. It would be wiped out in 45 minutes. This is all this effort we're going through. They actually told us that. The second thing is, I have seen the plans. I have a copy of the plans for where the dunes are going. I think everybody here is going to be pretty shocked to find out that there's only about 40 feet of beach left on one side of the dune towards the ocean. Then they want to make our beaches 200 feet long, longer. That has never worked in the history of mankind and we all know it. They've tried it everywhere. After several years, that's gone. It's just a waste of time and money. The third thing is, all of us who live on beach block, many of us have no right to vote, by the way, have no idea what is going to happen with the water on our streets, okay? I'm told by the mayor that the DEP is saying that they're going to pay for some solution that nobody has any idea what that solution is. They're probably going to take the least expensive, which will probably be outfall pipes, which means we're going to have pipes across our beaches going into the ocean. I think everybody here should understand that, whether you're for or against the dunes. We're going to have pipes on top of our beaches. This is all this information, which I think everybody needs to have to make a decision, whether you're for or against the dunes. Nobody knows. These are all questions that nobody has, nobody up there has any idea what their solution's going to be. What do they say to us? We have to put source.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, Mark? About three weeks ago, I received a call from the DEP who said they will call me the following week. They want to arrange a meeting, come down and talk with our engineer and with us about drains, street end drainage and ponding on, behind the dunes. I said, "Bring it on. Let's do this as quickly as we possibly can." They have yet to make that call. So I guess it's going to happen at some point soon, and I hope it's real soon, but they have not made that call yet.
And I just, I just want to interject one thing. In any conflict, and Mr. Kaplan said it, you know, magnificently, in my, in my opinion, in any conflict, in any business deal, you have to have two parties that are willing to negotiate. In my opinion, right now, we have, one of the two parties, us, are seemingly willing to negotiate some type of solution that's best for Margate. Right now, the Army Corps and the DEP is unwilling to negotiate, and they haven't done one thing in good faith, in my opinion, to lead us to believe that they're willing to come to the table and even talk to us. So in that regard, we have to be prepared, and I think we are now prepared, to challenge them when they do try and take our properties. We cannot just let them come here and take our properties. And I think we're prepared to challenge them. But the goal is to try and see if we can get them to be a little more reasonable and rational and at least talk to us about some type of solution that's good for everybody. And hopefully we'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm Carol Arman, 4 Dolphin Drive.
Speak in a microphone, please.
Hi, Carol Arman, 4 Dolphin Drive. I have lived in Margate since 1954, quite a while. I have seen the beaches come, I've seen the beaches go, but our beaches are bigger now than ever. And I feel very sad that this is going to change the whole complexion of this city. I walk on the beach every single day, up and down, and the sand from Ventnor I walk on the beach every single day, up and down, and the sand from Ventnor and Atlantic City is now in Margate. You can see a difference in the sand. So, anyone that's saying that we're going to have an indentation in Margate if we don't put in sand here is wrong. Just walk on the beach. A lot of the people that are talking about this don't go to the beach, they sit, or they sit way back. I walk on the beach, I walk six or seven miles a day. Anybody here can tell you I do. And I know what's happening. The sand that has been pumped in is different sand. It's totally different sand. It's shelly, it's gravelly, and you can see it coming down. That's just one issue. The other issue is, we don't have time. We don't have more time. The Army Corps of Engineers had boats, we saw them, the people that were on the beach saw the boats going up and down and coming in. So, they're starting to do something. We have to do something quickly. And as far as the DEP, I thought they were supposed to protect the environment. When we're talking about protecting beachfront property, that's not environment, and I don't know whether that could be part of our suit or not, or part of our complaint with them. We, the mayor, the governor is saying that he has to protect our welfare and safety. When we have a bad storm, what about the wind? How do we protect against the wind? In a terrible storm, in a hurricane, a northeastern, the wind and the poles coming down and the trees coming down and the roofs coming down are as much of a danger as the sea coming up. And we don't know where the sea is coming from, the bay or the ocean, but we know when it's windy, when we have terrible winds, it doesn't matter which way it's coming from, things are going to start falling. We have to evacuate during a big storm. Our health and safety and welfare depends on us in a horrible storm, leaving the island because of wind. The wind could, I live in suburban area during the winter time, we have houses crushed by trees, by poles. They're not saying, they're not coming to us and saying, chop down all the trees if, if, we have to protect ourselves. And that's, there is such a fear element going on here now, that we have to do something. In 100 years, we may have another storm. In 10 years, we may now have another storm. It may come from here, it may come from there.
15 seconds, Carol.
So, I'm just saying, we're up against the clock now, and we have to do something where this whole area is going to be so different. And there's so many of my neighbors that say they will move if the beaches are made ugly and that we have dunes and they have to crawl over these dunes and drag their things, they're going to move. And we are going to see more sale signs in this city, and our property values are going to continue to go down.
I would suggest that anybody that wants to move, move to Wildwood, because there's no dunes there. So, but anyhow, what happened October 29th, 2012? I'd like to get some facts here, because I've seen a lot of twisting of the facts. You had a situation where the storm was coming up the coast, a category one hurricane coming up the coast, and you had a northeastern storm coming, blocking that hurricane. And this, it hit this area at high tide and on a full moon, okay? And this was like the worst of all possible things that could happen, okay? Because I think we've all, people that have lived here for a long time, there've been a lot of storms, and we didn't have flooding. We didn't have flooding like that, and we had a little flooding, but it wasn't, it wasn't high tide, it was low tide, and it wasn't a full moon. Now, this has happened back in 92, it was a bad storm, not as bad, but it was a pretty bad storm. That was a northeastern. And in 62, there was a bad storm, which was just a northeastern. And I would say that's as bad as 2012. So, I would say, I would have to disagree with Commissioner Blumberg, we didn't have a 100-year storm, we had a 20-year storm, all right? Now, if you want to see a 100-year storm, go up to Manalogen, and you'll see a 100-year storm, where the beachfront houses were in the middle of Atlantic Avenue, and the gas pipes were ruptured and they were on fire, and people were injured trying to respond. The first responders were injured. Now, my point is, it's not a question whether there's going to be another storm, there will be another storm, and the question is whether we're going to be here to see it or not, but are we going to be ready for that storm? And that's really what the commissioner, the mayor and the commissioners should be thinking about. Are we going to be ready when that storm hits? Because it will hit. Also, I would like to, I'm really upset by the divisions in this city, too. I think it's very unfortunate. I've tried to be positive, I really have, through this whole thing. And I would like to see this work out so everybody's happy. And also, as far as the drainage goes, absolutely, that has to be taken care of. Commissioner Blumberg, you're right on that. That absolutely has to be done. You see? You see? So, I would like to have this all resolved well for everybody here. That's all. Also, and also, last thing, we didn't lose any funding from the state or the federal government for other stuff going forward. And in fact, if this guy could try to get more funding here, Mr. Andrews, that would be just fine. They get as much money as possible to protect this area, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
No, no.
We've already, you've already spoken.
Send a letter.
Any new... Is there a motion to close public comment?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Tobby?
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg?
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for coming.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Tobby?
Yes.
And Mr. Blumberg?
Yes.
Thank you all for being here, your voice does count.